Good morning, everybody, and welcome once again to City Hall and to the Council Chambers and to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, January 25th, 2002. We have seven members present, we need ten for a quorum, but this being Friday, we will begin, as is customary, with a few presentations and introductions. I do want to announce that Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., with a few exceptions that we tried to publicize and announce, but Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, you're free to join us and invited to join us and participate here in Chambers. We can also be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35, live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via Council phone. I'd like to recognize first Mr. Labange for a presentation. Councilmember Labange.
Mr. President, Members of Council, it's a beautiful day in Los Angeles on Friday. Last Friday, we had some great champions in here from the southern end of the city, from Narbonne, but we have some great champions from the heart of the city, from Pan Pacific Park. I want you to welcome with me right now the 2001 All-Star Minor Football Citywide Champions. Give them a big hand from Pan Pacific Park. You know, our city of Los Angeles has a great Department of Recreation and Parks, and in that department, throughout the city, at many of the various playgrounds, there's coaches and dedicated parents, and recreation directors, and mothers, and everybody putting great teams together, and you're looking at a great team. Come up here, team. Come up here, team. Who's the captain of the team right here?
Darius.
All right. What's his name?
Darius.
Darius Noster. Please welcome the captain of the 2001 championship team, citywide football from Pan Pacific Park, Darian...
Darius.
Darius Noster. Give him a big hand. I want you to say a few words, will you? On behalf of the team, I want to thank you and congratulate you. Darius also has some of his coaches who are here today, and we also have someone who's very special from the city family. One of the great people who was with us is one of our own city attorneys. Ms. Hawkins?
How are you? Give me a second. I didn't make so fast here. How are you doing?
I'm doing good.
Good. Okay. This is one of our city attorneys who also is with us this morning, who is a mother of one of these. Where's your child, right here?
Justin.
Get him up. Justin, get up here, Justin. Come up here. Please know that the city of Los Angeles wants to salute all of you, and salute each and every one of you for being good students. Good students. To be good students, then you have that extracurricular activity, and whether it's on the sports fields or in the gymnasiums, or in the music rooms, we'll hear from that in a few minutes, maestro, but in the music rooms and the dance rooms. You've done something very special, each and every one of you, and also, we have someone who's doing something very special in a couple of weeks, has been selected.
Yeah.
Let me have it.
Oscar.
Okay. But Oscar's one of the things.
Bellfield.
Yeah. Oscar Bellfield has been selected to represent Los Angeles at the NBA All-Star Game in Philadelphia in a few weeks out of Pan Pacific Park. And Oscar is a member of the team. What position do you play?
Power forward.
Power forward. Now, let me give you a little quick history here. The great thing about him going to Philadelphia in the city of brotherly love is the head coach of the Philadelphia Eagles, at your age, was punt, pass, and kick champion. So, history repeats itself. So, the head coach, Andy Reid, also went to the great John Marshall High School in Los Angeles, and he's there in Philadelphia. He'll be there to greet you in two, because hopefully the Eagles will be world champions if they beat the Rams this Sunday. But would you please say a few words on behalf of your team and what it feels like to be champions?
It feels good to be a championship, and we're a good team, and we play together, play hard, and I want to thank God for everything he done, and thank you.
Good. Champion. And the great thing about Pan Pacific and their championship, Mariah Lyons is a lion for the Pan Pacific team. Say a few words for us, Mariah.
Power. Come on. Power.
Just call a play. Call a play. What was it like? What was it like playing? And what would you do to encourage young women to play on sports teams? Tell us what it was like.
Fun.
Fun. That's a good thing. Good. And coach?
Freddie Bass.
Okay. And then, please welcome the driving force behind any good honor field, the coach, Freddie Bass.
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to say that this couldn't have been done without a lot of help from a lot of people, as far as parents and directors at the park, Jerry and Serena, and my co-coaches, Kenny Smith, Carlos Lowman, Anthony Catuz, and Darryl Harris. And we'd just like to say thank you for acknowledging us here, and we'll try to come back again. Thank you.
And with the help of a coach, we have our park director, Ms. Fish. Say hello to everybody from Pan Pacific Park out there.
Hello. I'd like to thank the Council for honoring our children today. They did a great job this year, and they're happy to be here, and we're happy to be here as well. I'd like to, just for a moment, call up the sports director, Jerry Chambers, who made this all happen for us at Pan Pacific.
Thank you so much. Arthur Wade, there. Thank you so much.
Well, it was a great pleasure to have some of the wonderful... These kids are very special kids, not only because they play football or basketball, but they come from great homes, the parents were more than supportive, and that's how it is at Pan Pacific. It seems like we all are family there, so it just worked out, and we just band together, became champions, and not only champions on the field, but these kids are going to be champions in life. So, it's just a pleasure to be around them, and I'm just supporting them and trying to put them in the right place at the right time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And to close out the presentation, I mentioned we have a great member of the city family. We also have the general manager. Come on up, Ellen Oppenheim of the Department of Recreation and Parks. I'm going to call on you, Ellie, after I say Carmen Hawkins, a city attorney who fights for justice every day for the city attorney's office, but also, she also lives and supports Pan Pacific and has her son here, but I want a few words, because one thing that is also great, Members of Council, as we know, is those who participate in helping in our parks and libraries and facilities throughout the city, but it's extra special for me when a city employee steps to the plate, in this case, a field, to help a team win a championship. Carmen Hawkins, for a few words.
Pan Pacific Park is one of the greatest parks that we have as part of the Wreck-Em Park system. I have to toot our horn, because this is our second city championship for the year 2001. We also won the basketball citywide championship for the minors. So, we are a park of champions that go back to, I believe, 1979, where we have Coach Kenny Smith, who brought one of the first championships to our park.
Good. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Ellen Oppenheim, our general manager.
Thanks so much. It's a pleasure to be here with this winning team. We're really proud of you. Great programs, great activities, and most importantly, great kids, and we look forward to them all having an opportunity to play in the wonderful new Pan Pacific facility very, very soon, so.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hold on, before you leave, before you leave, there's a couple of members who also wish to say a few words. In the same breath, let me announce, colleagues, if you haven't noticed already, our computer system is down, so we're going to do this the old-fashioned way. Wave your hands at me. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, I rise to salute Pan Pacific, the leadership locally there, with the Wreck-Em Parks staff, with the general manager, Mr. Labange, for his leadership in being readied at all times to acknowledge, not only to acknowledge, but affirm young people and their aspirations as they attempt to grow, develop, and to contribute to the quality of life of their own communities, and to be productive citizens in the context of our city. But I also want to hasten to comment on Carmen Hawkins and her steadfast involvement in doing those things that help young people in to develop, to grow, to be all that they can be. And so, Carmen, we take this opportunity to especially acknowledge you. I note that your mother is here, and she credentialed herself as the grandma of the team, and every good team has a grandmother, so give them a big round of applause, won't you? Thank you, and glad bless.
Any other members? And also, Mr. President, the mayor, and to the champion sends his regards. He's sorry he couldn't be here today, but he wanted to equally recognize the Pan Pacific City Champions. Congratulations. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Mr. Labange, I believe you had a second presentation? Did you wish to do that now, or take a few pictures and come back?
Right.
Okay. Chair recognizes Mr. Reyes for a presentation.
Council President, we're waiting for a very special guest. Be right with us. Members of the Council, I'm here today because I wanted to take the time to tell you about some very special young people. The young people that you see behind me. These young people represent the LAPD Explorers Northeast Area Troop 43, and the reason that they are here is simple. They are here because they decided that they wanted to make a difference, and they did it in a very unique way. You see, all of us, as all of us do, they understand the dangers that police officers face in their day-to-day lives protecting us, and like each of us here, the explorers do what they can to support our men and women in blue. But they also took notice about something that many of us may have overlooked, that the canines of the LAPD also put their lives on the line for the benefit of our safety. They realize that quite often, canines are sent into search missions for some of the most dangerous people out there, and they often do it with no protection for themselves. The explorers behind me decided to do something about it. They decided to hold a good old-fashioned bake sale, the proceeds of which went to the purchasing of two bulletproof vests for these fine canines you see today, and they raised nearly $1,500. And that's a lot of cookies, and they did it. And they did it for all the right reasons. They did it because they understood the value of this very special unit. They understood that to protect the lives of these wonderful animals meant that they were protecting the lives of our police officers. And when they talk about our youth in the city, it's easy to point to the ones that aren't doing the right things. These explorers are doing the right things. So, I wanted to bring them into Council today so that they can share with you what they did. It was important, and we are truly grateful, and I applaud their efforts. Please, let's give them a round of applause. You see how scared we can get? So, I have certificates for all of them. I can give them... I'll give them to them. I'll give them the certificates a little bit later, but right now, I wanted to invite Northeast Division Captain Kyle Jackson up to the podium for a few words, and maybe, hopefully, can introduce the other members of the department who are joining us. Captain Jackson?
Council President, Members of the City Council, I simply like to say thank you. Thank you for taking the time to recognize and to honor these young people, these explorers that are assembled behind me. I think Councilman Reyes said it best. Oftentimes, we only hear about those situations where young people have gone astray, where they've done something that's either tragic or terribly wrong. In this instance, our explorers have done something right. They've done a good deed in an effort to enhance public safety in the Northeast community, and I greatly appreciate your recognizing them in this grand way today. Thank you so very, very much, and I know this will go a long way to help them to understand the leadership role that they play in our community. Thank you very much. At this point, I would like Chief Margaret York, my boss, the commanding officer of Operation Central Bureau, just to make a couple of comments.
Good morning, Councilman Padilla, Mr. President, and Councilmembers. We're very proud of this group of explorers from Northeast. They've won championships, they have been well-disciplined, well-trained, but most importantly, they really care about our police officers to the extent that they went out and had this bake sale and earned the money, not only for the safety of the dogs, but the safety of the officers. So, I just want to express today my great pride in these wonderful young people from Northeast. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We have a certificate here. I'd like to present to the Explorer Lieutenant, Luis Coronel. It says, "In appreciation of your outstanding efforts in fundraising to support the Los Angeles Police Department K-9 Unit, your commitment contributes to a positive relationship between the community and the police department, and truly embodies the spirit of community-based policing." Presented by Council. Thank you so much, Luis.
Good morning. I'd like to begin by thanking, thanking you for being here today. Thank you for recognizing our post. In fundraising for the K-9 activity, our YSO Officer Ambassador came up with this activity. She told us about it, and we were enthusiastic. We wanted to do this activity. We wanted to provide service to other people, to K-9 Unit. And who would have thought that this activity gave us two vests for the canines? We would also like to thank the officers who supported this event, YSO's Officer Ambassador and Officer Carvel, and Captain Jackson, who gave us faith, who provided faith toward this project, toward our program, and lastly, the explorers, because without them, it wouldn't have been possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Misekowsky.
I would just like to say to the explorers, and ask you to the chief of police who's here today, we talk an awful lot about recruitment, and it's an interesting symmetry today, because we are going to be honoring later a deputy chief who spent 40 years in LAPD. But I know that I am looking in that aisle there, standing at attention, future LAPD officers. So, when we need to go out recruiting, the explorers are the ones who have committed now to this line of service, who have an interest. We put money in the budget last year for student-worker programs, so that after you graduate high school, go on to college, that hopefully the LAPD can have a place for you that you can work part-time. So, I appreciate seeing what I'm seeing here, and I just want to encourage you that there is a place for you in LAPD, so keep it your work, keep it your studies. You're showing your community service now, and hopefully, we'll see you back here in a full-blue uniform in years ahead. Thank you.
Any other members wishing to be heard?
At this point, we're going to pass the vest that the explorers worked so hard to raise money to purchase. We're going to pass them on now to the Metropolitan Division K-9.
Thank you, Councilman Reyes, Council President, Honorable Councilmembers. I think it was said best, Councilman Reyes and Captain Jackson indicated that these canines and their handlers, on a daily basis, go after the most dangerous felons in the city. Last year, we searched for 700 suspects, and of those, 33% were armed with either a knife, a handgun, shotgun, or assault rifle. But what's truly amazing is almost two years ago, we only had two vests.
As a result of the generous donations by the explorers, particularly the recent donation by the Northeast explorers and others in the city, it's amazing that all the donations have come from the young men and women between the ages of six and 17 years old. And rather than having donations and fundraisers to go to Disneyland or Knott's Berry Farm, they've decided to make a commitment to the public safety of the city. So they are the true heroes and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Chair recognizes next, Mr. Weiss for a presentation.
All right. Colleagues, being arrayed before you right now is the championship volleyball team from Marymount High School. These athletes behind me really did something extraordinary this year. Their squad went 34 and 4, and let me tell you the championships they won this year. They won the Sunshine League Championship, the CIF Southern Section Division 4 Championship, the CIF Southern Regions Championship, and the CIF State Championship Division 4. This was the first year that they won all four titles, but last year they also won the state title. They are an extraordinary team, they are role models, not just for kids their age and younger, but for all of us in terms of what it means to be an athlete, what it means to be a scholar athlete, and what it means to be a sportswoman. They are, they are an extraordinary bunch. They were led by senior setter hitter Haley Jorgensberg and they were coached by Kerry Klein. They really are an exceptional group and I'd like to recognize them now individually and give them their certificates. First, Elizabeth Switin. Jenna Dykstra. Kerry Frash. Rachel Greenberg. Virginia Livanis. Taryn O'Reilly. Mikey Roberts. Stasha Selsky. Evan Shoup. Carolyn Thompson. Megan Wood. Margaret Young. And Haley Jorgensberg. I also have certificates for Liz Driscoll, the Director of Athletics. Christine Gallagher, the Assistant Coach. She's not here. And Coach Klein. I'd like to ask the Director of Athletics if she could come forward and say a few words. We'd love to hear from her.
I'd like to thank Councilman Weiss for allowing us to come here today to acknowledge our young women from Marymount. We're very proud of them and it really is quite an accomplishment to win the state championship title and certainly for two years in a row. So I'm sure you can imagine how proud the school is of the girls. And I know I speak from also the head of school, that we're not only proud of their athleticism, but also of their commitment to athletics and the time, year-long commitment to that, but also the way they've maintained their academic life too. On average, this team has maintained a 3.8 or above cumulative average for that team, which is incredible given the time they spend committed to athletics. But I think the one thing that makes this team really unique is the sportsmanship and integrity that they play with. They have earned themselves a reputation in the, within the high schools and the sporting world of being truly outstanding young women. And we did receive, one of our players received the state sportsmanship award, but I can truly say that that award could quite easily have gone to any one of the girls on this team. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you and thanks to all of you for coming down today. The City of Los Angeles is very proud of what you've accomplished and once again, we congratulate the champions from Marymount High School.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Chair recognizes Mr. Labange for another presentation.
Congratulations. Mr. President, members of council, we're always so happy when a member of family does great things, but this is not what is great about my cousin here, but he is also on leave because he just got home from Afghanistan and he's passing through town on his way back to his base in Barksdale Air Force Base in Shreveport, Louisiana. So I just wanted to take a minute because this man represents all young men and women from Los Angeles today as members of the Armed Forces serving the United States of America in its efforts to rid the world of bad things such as terrorism and other things that affect the world. He just came home from Afghanistan. He's on a flight crew with a B-52, but on behalf of the council, when you go back to Barksdale Air Force Base, Tim McFadden, I want you to present this commendation. Raise your right hand, we're gonna swear you in as an honorary Deputy City Council Member, okay? To salute the United States Air Force for their service, the men and women who serve with greatness and make all of us Angelinos proud and thank you for what you do. Put your hand down now, Timmy. Okay? Timmy also was born in the great First District at Reyes at the French Hospital when I started my career and I took my city truck up College Street, Chief Parks, parked it illegally, but I ran up and seen my real cousin Diane when you were born. But it's great to have the full circle and as he's passing through town, he'll be able to go back to his members of his squadron and give them the best wishes from the City of Los Angeles. Congratulations, Tim, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
You wanna say hello?
Sure.
Good job, all right. Thank you. Tim McFadden?
To the City Council and all the City of Los Angeles on behalf of the 20th Bomb Squadron and really all the B-52s that were deployed out to Diego Garcia flying missions over Afghanistan, the support we received from the entire United States and especially the City of Los Angeles was tremendous. And you really don't know how much that means to the people deployed overseas, whether it's in the Middle East or Far East or South Asia. So just thank you again and we're proud of you just as much as you're proud of us. Thanks again. All right, we'll see you. Thanks, Tom. We'll see you tomorrow.
And also, Mr. President, before we get to the distinguished Dr. Katz, I just wanted to recognize, last night, there was great festivities in the rotunda City Hall because the All City Employees Association recognized great employees for their work. And I'd like to call up the family of Larry James Walker and also Robert Bob Campbell, please, at this time, to give him special recognition, for they were named, and unfortunately, in the case of Larry James Walker, but possibly he has unfortunately left this world to a higher place, but he was saluted by his peers as being named to the All City Employee of the Year Award for 2000. And we just wanted to take this moment in council to salute you, because we have great employees who do great things throughout Los Angeles. And last night was a festive and I was late working at my desk and I heard the noise and I came down and there was no one there from the building department to keep it quiet, but it was such a great party, I joined in and invited you here today. So please receive this on behalf of the city to salute you for Larry and the work that he did. Thank you so much. And also, I'll have you respond in a minute. You recognize Bob Campbell and there's some of his folks in the back wave there. Bob Campbell has been the one who's been the force for the good construction around the city, not only in this building, but in libraries and facilities throughout everyone's district. So upon receiving the award for the All City Employee of the Year for 2001, Bob Campbell joining me is Councilman Eric Garcetti in saluting you to congratulate you on this as well. Congratulations, Bob. You wanna say a few words, Bob, and introduce your family? I would like to thank Councilman Labange and the City Council for this honor and I'd like to introduce my wife, Mary, my daughter, Laura, and my granddaughter, Amanda. And thank you again. And the great thing, both graduates at John Marshall High, so we're scoring a big... Wanda Williams Brown is gonna speak in behalf of the late, great Larry Walker. Wanda also is with the city family as a member of the Department of Water and Power.
Mr. President, to the City Council in general, it's a real honor for me to stand here today to receive this award in my brother's memory. I was sharing with Margaret Lee Thomas that I've been an employee of the city for 27 years and this is my first opportunity to stand in council. And it's because of my brother. My brother was a very proud employee of the city. He wore his city jacket with pride. He was very proud of his photographs with Chief Parks and Margaret Lee Thomas and all those others that he had rubbed shoulders with here in council. So it's a real honor for me to receive this award on his behalf and for my mother, my sister, and his daughter who could not be here today. Thank you.
Here's Steve King, President of the All City Employees Association.
Thank you, Tom, members of the council. I'd just like to thank you and other members of the council for helping us become such a great organization. And this is the year that we finally decided that we had to acknowledge the working members of our city staff and that's why we this year have announced the membership, I mean the, of Tom, I mean, sorry, Bob Campbell and Larry Walker, who were in the trenches, working every day, everyday city employees, and we were very proud to present them with our Employee of the Year Awards for 2000, 2001. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Really Thomas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Once again, I think Steve King and the association is to be acknowledged for moving forward to affirm the contributions of city employees to not only municipal service, but to the quality of life of our communities. There's no better example of that than Larry Walker himself, who not only worked diligently as a city employee, but had a real sense of what it meant to be a community participant. At the school where his daughter attended and his other context in which he could find himself, he made a difference. And we take this moment to remember him, remember him fondly and wish to emulate the best of his own values and virtues as they are the very things that make communities great and neighborhoods better. So Steve and family and to Tom and to all those who are acknowledging city employees with these awards, thank you. You make a difference in our lives.
Thank you, Mr. Really Thomas.
And thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to call on Janice Hahn to join me, if Janice Hahn would join me at this time, because Janice Hahn is being summoned there. The great thing about being around a long time is you have a little history behind you and no one has greater history than Janice Hahn in seeing the things that have taken place in this city and this county.
For such a young woman.
And for such a young woman who's gonna turn 37 years old next Tuesday, I think it is. But it's my honor and thank you, Mr. President, for this honor and along with your brother for the mayor, to salute someone who's extremely special to Los Angeles and has been special for not just a decade, not just a quarter of a century, but well over a half-century for 65 years in recognition. Please welcome to the podium, Dr. Ernest Katz, the Director of the Los Angeles Junior Philharmonic Orchestra. And also in memory of all who have served before, especially late Mayor Tom Bradley and our dear friend, my dear friend, my mentor, John Ferraro, and your great father, the supervisor, we have this commendation on behalf of all residents of the City of Los Angeles. And it's a great pleasure for us to join together in appreciation of your outstanding service and dedication to the children of this city, for your unselfish commitment and your leadership that has touched the lives of many throughout the years that you have contributed through the music of the Los Angeles Junior Philharmonic Orchestra. Best wishes for all continued success. You're extremely, a true angel in the City of Angel with a baton in his hand. Please welcome Dr. Ernest Katz.
Thank you very much. This is not the first time I've been here at Los Angeles City Hall. I was here the day it opened up and that was a long time ago. Every mayor for many, many years was with us on many occasions here at City Hall. We are deeply grateful to the City of Los Angeles for being here, because Los Angeles is the greatest spot in the whole wide world to live in. When I started the Junior Philharmonic Orchestra 65 years ago, it does seem like 100, but it was only 65 years ago. It was a dire time in this great city. Men were selling apples on street corners for a nickel an apple. Young people had no place to go and there were talented young musicians. And so I decided in 1937, on January the 22nd, to found the Junior Philharmonic Orchestra. And I founded it with four young men. And it was all young men for the first year until I said, "Stop. We must bring in girls into the orchestra." And it wasn't until we brought the girls into the orchestra that the Junior Philharmonic began to be very famous. And it grew from four people now to 136 people. We've been honored by eight Presidents of the United States, by kings and queens from around the world, but we are very grateful and happy that you are here to recognize the Junior Philharmonic Orchestra. And I accept all the honors that you are bestowing on me, not because it's me. And I'm happy to be here, but I'm telling you, I'm only the surrogate conductor of the Junior Philharmonic Orchestra. The almighty God is leading that orchestra and he wants it to go ahead and that's the reason I'm here. Bless all of you and keep America free from any harm and I'm delighted to be here and I thank you very, very much.
Before you go, Dr. Katz.
Also, Dr. Katz, we also have a very special friend in Dr. Katz who I'm gonna call up to the podium just to speak a moment or two. He's an Academy Award-winning composer. He is a very special friend. Please welcome Robert B. Sherman, who we all know, Chitty Chitty Bang Bang, Mary Poppins, and all that great music, Tigger. Please have a big hand for Robert B. Sherman, dear friend of Ernst's. Please have a big hand for Robert B. Sherman, dear friend of Ernst Katz.
It's a great pleasure to be here, to honor Ernst Katz, because he is one of the outstanding people of Los Angeles. I love the guy. He loves everybody.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Bless you. Mr. Labange, a few members wish to say a few words. And I'm going to ask Ms. Hahn right now, who is 37 next Tuesday. Here we go. Nice.
Thank you. One of the things I love about Councilman Labange is he always makes you feel good, but he's always generous. This was not my presentation, but he allowed me to co-present it with him. And Dr. Katz and my dear father, Kenny Hahn, were great friends. And just sitting here on the front row, I was led down memory lane with a lot of great stories. And I just want to say that you have helped to touch generations in Los Angeles and you have helped to raise up generations of young people who found inspiration and found meaning in their life and who is to say that you actually saved lives in the process. But you know, Dr. Katz, one of the great things about him is he's made so many friends over the years. Everyone is his friend, and it's been about relationships. And I just have to tell you this story. He's gotten awards from many organizations, from elected officials. He's met kings, he's met queens. But he just told me this great story that I think sums it up. He said, "The only award he never accepted was when the Pope was going to bestow an award on him, and he said, 'All I want is may I have five minutes to chat with the Pope.'" And they said, "No, that's not possible. You're just there to receive the reward." And he said, "Thank you, but no, thank you. If I can't have a moment to connect, to bond, to share a story, then I don't want to do it." And I think that just sums up the kind of man you are. It's about friends, it's about relationships, and you've certainly created them over the years. So really glad to be here on behalf of the mayor, which I guess the mayor is not here this morning, but I understand this candle can only be lit by the mayor, not the sister of the mayor.
No.
So we'll have to wait for that to be lit by the mayor. So congratulations, Dr. Katz. You're a wonderful man. Love you.
Mr. Reyes.
I just want to just say quickly, the reason why the Pope didn't want to see you, Ernst, is because you have no sins and you needed no confession.
Mr. Reyes.
Yes, thank you, Council President, Dr. Katz. I too was introduced to you this morning. I was looking at the pictures with their supervisor, Hahn, that candle was pretty high. And as you can see, the candle has now gone down, but it's the test of time that you've endured. At a time when our youth were averaging 2,000 young people being incarcerated monthly, it's individuals like you that I think are true heroes to salvage the lives of our young people who are right now in true need of role models like yourself. And I just want to thank you for everything you do for our communities. Thank you so much.
Mr. Garcetti.
Mr. President, I think we got word from the Pope's office that he very much regretted not spending that time with you. I also wanted to congratulate you today. I come from a family of musicians on my mother's side, and I remember going with my grandmother to the Junior Philharmonic Orchestra when I was in high school, and what a great experience it was. And my family's been a strong supporter of the orchestra for many, many years. And I think we have to remember that with our young people too, that having access to the great jewels, the cultural jewels of the city is so important. And sometimes we overlook that, and cultural affairs and music and things kind of get pushed aside as afterthoughts for us as public policymakers. But you have been a champion. I hope you can inspire us to continue to be champions, because for every young person who gets exposed to the wondrous music that you produce, I think it does save lives, as Councilmember Hahn said, and I think it does change lives. So thank you very much and congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Gary, Gary Asgreen, the concert master, the man with the baton, please.
Mr. Padilla, members of the City Council, I want to join with you and congratulate Dr. Katz and to thank you for the opportunity for letting us be here this morning. The real significance is another point, and that's, I don't want to get lost here. And that's Dr. Katz's philosophy for these 65 years. Not only has he been training young people in music and bringing generations up, but he's done this, and this is very important for all of us here, he's done this without any government subsidy, ever. His philosophy is, what can we as individuals do to make our community a better place? Now just think, if we can tell the world about what he does and what he's doing all these many, many years, to clone a few others, a few more Dr. Katz's in our society will not only save money for the community, but save the community. This is the important philosophy that I think must be really told today, without government subsidy, without commercial sponsorship. And not one member of the thousands and thousands of young people who have gone through the Junior Philharmonic, not one member has ever paid 10 cents for membership. It's done without charge to them. That is the real beauty of what this is really all about and why it's really incredible. And that's why a candle was presented over 50 years ago and lit by the mayor all these years. Thank you very much. And this is what we want to get out to the community and to the world, what one person can do for our society. A few more of these, a much, much better place. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holden. Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, I mean, we just marvel what Dr. Katz has done in terms of helping our young people, music appreciation. And you kind of feel the gap, the void that was left by the Board of Education when they took music appreciation out of our schools. It's kind of criminal act on their part, to be very honest with you, where the sensitivity was not there. Just to think how well some of these youngsters would have done, how much they would have been able to achieve if they was in a music program. That's how you learn mathematics, to counting and so on. And they could have helped them in so many other ways, but you never forsaken them. You're always there for them. And for 65 years, you've touched so many who then went on to touch others. And although we provide you with an award commendation here today, we cannot honor you enough for the years remaining for all of us, for all that you have done. And your program is right in my district, United Methodist Church, I believe, right there on Worship Boulevard, where you have your recitals and rehearsals and where the young people gather. And so we in the 10th District and the relative city of Los Angeles, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Ernst. Thank you. I just want to say too, I know we had the great champions from Pan Pacific, and we had Marymount here too, but music is a great champion too. Athletics and sports, education, humanities, and you certainly is very special. And Gary's just going to tell us about your great support from Smith Barney and also your next concert.
Well, what we want to do is, we want to invite you, Mr. President, Alex Padilla, and members of the City Council and all the public to our anniversary concert. The 65th anniversary concert is going to be on May the 1st of this year at the Dorothy Chandler Pavilion. And due to the generosity in hosting the program, the program is going to be hosted by Solomon Smith Barney, so that there will be no charge to the public for this really grand event. But I do want to comment one thing, no support ever goes to the Junior Philharmonic Orchestra directly. Solomon Smith Barney is kind enough to host this program, so we can invite you, the public, to this great event at no charge.
Well, good. Thank you very much, Dr. Katz. Everybody stand up and let's have a big hand and a big cheer for Ernst Katz, Dr. Katz. Long live Dr. Katz and the great Los Angeles Junior Philharmonic Orchestra. Okay, we're going to go into the back and take a picture. Come on into the back. Thank you, Mr. Labange. Chair recognizes, I believe it's Mr. Holden, Ms. Sikowski, and Mr. Zine for a presentation.
Mr. President, thank you for calling us to the podium. Today is not a happy day for us and for Los Angeles Police Department, because we are here to celebrate the retirement and celebrate the career, a 41-year career of Deputy Chief Maurice Moore, who is retiring today. This man, Maurice, don't get in the back, you're right here up front. His career at LAPD not only spans 41 years, but it spans some of the most important days of Los Angeles Police Department. He, in his career and what he has done, where he has been in the police department, just is Los Angeles Police Department. He has served as a patrol officer. He's served in organized crime and intelligence. He's served in the vice division, personnel division. He served in the Office of Chief of Police, where he was executive officer under Chief Daryl Gates, South Traffic, Metropolitan Division, the premier division in the Los Angeles Police Department, Internal Affairs, Administrative Vice, Operations West, Operations Central, Operations Headquarters, Government Liaisons. I was saying to Harry Edo today, our government liaison, "Look, the shoes he can fill and how far he can reach." He has just been an incredible officer, serving under 10 chiefs of police in the Los Angeles Police Department, and serving each of them with commitment, with loyalty, with compassion. One of his charges recently, and what he's been in charge of, I think perhaps best epitomizes what the LAPD is about. He has served as the liaison to implement and administer the Fast Track system, something that was initiated in the Los Angeles Police Department within the last, perhaps about five, six, eight years ago. And listen to what Fast Track is. We use a lot of acronyms, and particularly more so in the police department than anywhere else. But Fast Track stands for focus, accountability, strategy, teamwork, response, and coordination. Fast Track is what Los Angeles Police Department is about, and that has been led by Chief Moore, calling into accountability, counting into that teamwork and collaboration, each of the others, of the deputy chiefs from all the bureaus, creating that collaboration, creating that accountability, creating what we have seen over the last number of years since Fast Track has been in place. And that is an amazing decrease in crime in the city of Los Angeles, an amazing attempt at trying new approaches, collaborating, learning new ideas and working with them, but holding each of the bureaus accountable for what they need to do, giving them the flexibility to do what they need to do. And under that leadership, really being the face and that that is good about Los Angeles Police Department. That's who is standing next to me today, the face of Los Angeles Police Department that is good, that we need to have been putting forward, that we were putting forward, and that 10 different chiefs of police recognized and gave Maurice the assignments that they knew he could handle and that was going to be responsive to LAPD. He has, the chief has some incredible shoes to fill with Chief Moore's leaving. He has just been a stellar foundation around which a lot of things the LAPD over the last four decades have accomplished. And I know that the chief is going to miss him, I'm going to miss him, and I think the public, the people of Los Angeles, are going to miss him even if they didn't know that he was there, because he has been so incredible, a support system and a commitment to Los Angeles Police Department that we just can't fill it. I would like also to, well, as I say, you can see from who is behind me, they were all standing in the back of the room, but they have come forward. Members of the Los Angeles Police Department who are his colleagues, some of them are his peers, his deputy chiefs, commanders who have worked with him, support staff who has worked with him, police officers who have worked with him, across the board, they respect this man, they are here to honor him, as are we. Maurice, we are going to miss you.
Thank you so very much.
What do you say about a man who smiles all the time? Everybody loves this face, Maurice Moore, deputy chief. I've known Chief Moore for many, many years, from my years with the LAPD. Personable, dashing, effective, efficient, get the job done. He has been involved in so many assignments in his career to write his book, his legendary book, to be a bestseller, the activities that he's been involved with. And we had lunch recently, and I was surprised that the chief bought, but that was nice. Thank you very much. During the DNC, and I remember that Los Angeles, with the Democratic National Convention, law enforcement operations were critical. And I'll never forget the time that I followed Chief Moore and his entourage, where he took hundreds of protesters from their staging area voluntarily through a parade, where he marched them right up to county jail. It was absolutely amazing, the technique and the strategy he used to diffuse a situation that could have turned into a very dangerous situation for the officers and for the protesters. But his ability to lead, to direct, to motivate has been an inspiration for many within the department. And 40 years, 10 months of dedicated service. And looking at the resolution that was prepared, two items that I really noted, in that period of time, he has not used any sick time, and he's the only command officer, according to the resolution, that carries a .45 caliber for protection. So he's not only a street-minded police officer, but an administrator, a leader of the organization who will be sorely missed. The many, many years, the many, many years of his dedication will take with it those fond memories of all those that have worked alongside. But as Councilmember Sikowski, myself, Councilmember Holden, who will speak in a few minutes, we all have great respect and admiration and wish many, many years of happiness in the years of retirement. But I'm sure with all your activities and your manner of life, you're not going to be sitting on the bench feeding the pigeons. You will be involved, you'll be involved in activities. And keep that smile going, because it's an inspiration for all. God bless you and many, many happy years. Councilmember Holden, next.
Thank you, Dennis. It's certainly a unique experience for the three of us, Ms. Sikowski, Denny Zine, who is Mr. Police Protective League.
That's my old job.
But the fact is that when it came to the attention of the council, that Chief Moore was to retire, it was Denny Zine who said, who preempted everybody, and put the resolution in to accommodate the chief. That was quite nice, and I was impressed by that, Dennis. I just want you to know that you selected one of LA's finest to honor here today, Chief Moore. I got to know him when I was elected, well, that is, got to know him 14-plus years ago. But he was always very active in our community, helping the young people, letting people know he was available to assist them at any time when there was a problem in their community. It's just amazing. It always impressed me so much that I knew Los Angeles Police Department was the finest in the nation and in the world, because they were well-trained. Yes, you have some across the line, but there were so many others who did their job so well, that we could respect them on a continuous basis. And so Chief Moore is one of such, one such person and officer. I remember when we had some, after I was elected, we had a problem over Renee Park over by Robertson and Beverly Wood, I think the street is. And where the gang members was hanging out and selling drugs and had their bicycles and they would stash their goods. And the people were being terrorized in the area. And there was a chief, now wasn't a chief, not even captain, had a temporary assignment in the area. But he came there, he made a personal appearance at the park where all the homeowners were gathered, and told them that the area would be cleaned up, and it has been ever since. And they thank you so much for that commitment and for a job well done. I know that sometimes we're in this position, your life will be taken or someone is trying to take your life. So you have to defend the public, but you also defend yourself. We're having an event, 100 Black Men, which had a scholarship program for the young black scholars. And we're all waiting for Chief Moore to appear, and he was interrupted by a criminal who tried to take his life as he was making a phone call in a telephone booth, and pointed a gun at his head. He smiles, he did things that you didn't have to, I say, he smiles all the time. But he did some things that most of us would not want to do. But he had to do what he had to do, and so it was done. The fact of the matter is that, chief, I don't know anyone... The fact of the matter is that, chief, I don't know anyone in or out of the department who's ever said a bad word about you, that they don't like you. No, never. And that's because that's the kind of person you are, and sometimes, you know, they've been very fair with you. Others, they don't always be fair with them, you know. But I want you to know that, yes, the people of the city of Los Angeles are going to miss you. We hope that you don't go away too far. We hope that the mayor of this city, his name is Jimmy Hahn, will reach out and grab you and put you in a key position where you can continue to serve the people of the city of Los Angeles. We all want that to happen. And congratulations, in your departure, you're not going to retire, because we're going to find a way to put you back to work, put you back on the job and keep you there.
Hey, thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Mr. President and members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to come up and make some comment about Chief Moore. I have known him almost my entire career of almost 37 years. In fact, it's just like yesterday, I remember my first meeting with him in the Crenshaw Shopping Center, where he's sitting in a restaurant studying for the sergeant's exam. Got a chance to walk up and talk with him and introduce myself. But I think although we know about his career in the Los Angeles Police Department, I think the things he had done outside the department are also noteworthy in the fact that he's had a long-term relationship with our urban league in the city, has been at their beck and call on a variety of issues. He also was a founding member of the Oscar Joe Bryan Association and also our Association of Black Law Enforcement Executives. He has taken time to mentor people on this department, and the flowing of appreciation was certainly identified yesterday as internally, a number of people commended him and thanked him for 40 years of service, in which they went out and put a video together and a variety of people brought gifts, so they can show him how much they appreciate him and also how much he'll be missed. And so it's going to be a big change for, not to see Maurice in uniform, not to be in LAPD after today, but we do know his numbers and we do have a recall program. And so we will stay in touch with him because he will always be a member of the Los Angeles Police Department family, and in behalf of the 13,000 members of that department, we just want to say have a great retirement, stay in touch, and we look forward to seeing you in the city of Los Angeles somewhere where you are having a great time, whether refinishing one of your cars or just out on a tour or do whatever you do best. And so we're just very, very happy to be here today and say thank you, thank you, thank you for 40 years.
Thank you, boy.
Well, Mr. President and members of the council, thank you so very, very much for this acknowledgement, and specifically to councilmember Ms. Sikowski and councilmember Zine and certainly councilmember Holden. You know, I've had a great working relationship with this body and got to meet a lot of fine people here. You know, little did I know when I entered the academy, say, May of 1961, that I would be joining the most outstanding organization as far as law enforcement is concerned that I could imagine I could be in, and certainly joining the ranks of people who've come before me who've done a great job in serving the people of this great city. And I truly am blessed to have been involved in the Los Angeles Police Department, you know, especially when you think that when I came on in 1961, I never dreamed that I would be a deputy chief, especially when, that's when we integrated in 1961, integrated the police cars, where black officers and white officers worked together. So with that vision that I had coming in then and where I am now, certainly there's been major changes in our department, all for the good of this city. And I think about things that I will miss, certainly the young men and women of the Los Angeles Police Department and certainly their leadership, fine people on the department that are trying to serve this city well. And then I also think about the fact that I will miss, you know, having to be able to work for one of the greatest chiefs of police this city has ever known. And so I've enjoyed that, that's going to absolutely be something I have to look at television and watch and see how we're still doing. But the things I won't miss, I won't miss the hot seats up there. Absolutely not. And in fact, Ron Deaton, I won't miss Ron Deaton either. But he knows I love him. But anyhow, with that, I do say that I have had a great career. I do thank you all for your acknowledgement, and once again, especially for working, being able to work with Cindy Sikowski. You've done an admirable job as it relates to the chair of public safety, and LAPD is better before it, and I really appreciate that. I told Adina I wouldn't miss her, but you got the right person assigned to, absolutely liaison for you, so thank you so very, very much. And Dennis, for your friendship over all the years, without a doubt.
Absolutely.
And how, and this great councilman here that has been so good to me, and we've talked about a lot of things and worked on a lot of projects together. And then Councilman Ridley Thomas is sitting over there, but certainly we worked on some things as well. And so thank you, sir, for everything you've done. Thank you, people.
Thank you.
And I love you, sir.
Chair recognizes Ms. Hahn for a presentation.
I would like to call up this morning a real hero from Wilmington, Mr. John Garcia. John, are you still here? And I want the chief to come up here. Come on, John. I understand you thought you were coming down here to testify on keeping that skate park in our new budget, which we already did. All right, listen to this story. Listen to this story. On the afternoon of Saturday, December 15th, John Garcia was making his usual rounds at the Wilmington Recreation Center where he works as a recreation assistant on the weekends. As he supervised the kids playing, he noticed a man getting out of his car in the parking lot who began running towards the gymnasium with one of his hands suspiciously by his side. John quickly realized that the man was carrying a gun, and he knew instantly that he must act. Running into the gym, John ushered childrens and parents alike into the side office and out of direct danger. Once inside, he realized that there were still kids playing outside in the park, on the playground, and he demanded that they also come inside in this office. When he had gathered them safely inside the office, he closed the door behind him. As it turned out, the gymnasium was the site of a major gun battle with several individuals trading gunfire across the gym floor. There were over 100 people inside that day and more out on the playground. Thanks to John's quick thinking and action, there were no injuries and no fatalities. You know, usually we honor, and rightly so, our public safety officers who are always the true heroes, always running towards the danger, running to serve, running to protect. But sometimes we forget that average city employees sometimes on a daily basis work outside of their normal scope of duty to protect the lives of children in our community. So, John, I am thrilled to present to you the certificate on behalf of the city of Los Angeles and to honor you for your courage and your ability to think quickly and have only one thing in mind, and that was to protect the children in Wilmington. So on behalf of a very grateful community of Wilmington and on behalf of a very grateful city of Los Angeles, we present you with this honor. Thank you very much.
Mr. President and members of city council, I'd like to add my voice with councilperson Hahn in commending Mr. Garcia. This is something that clearly is beyond the scope and breadth of duties as an employee of the rec center, but we, he personally saved a large number of lives that day. He was able to think quickly, bring people into a safe area, call the police, and basically caused the situation to come to a positive conclusion. On behalf of the Police Department, we'd just like to say thank you for that partnership. We want to say thank you for thinking about kids first and also being a partner in solving this crime. And so we'd just like to also provide him with a commendation and say thank you very much.
Good morning. I'd just like to add a few thoughts to the things that have already been said. Thanks to John Garcia's quick action, literally under fire, a lot of kids were spared from very, very serious harm that day. That's the kind of action, being thoughtful, protecting the community, protecting our children, that we hope our staff never have to exercise, but when tested, he rose to an incredible challenge. I'd also like to recognize that his wife even played a role in this because when the situation was happening, they live in the neighborhood, his wife heard, called the center, he responded and indicated that he needed help, and she got on the phone and called 911 while he continued to herd the kids into safety. So it's an incredible family effort even, too. And with that, I'd like to recognize that John is himself a lifelong Wilmington resident, has been working already at the Wilmington Teen Center, when we were fortunate to be able to hire him to work in the Recreation Center as well, to continue his great work in the community. So I want to commend him and the staff for a great job in saving many young people that day. Thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you for this unexpected. I was brought over here, they told me it was for something else. Thank you. I really don't, I just thank God nobody was hurt, and I wasn't hurt, and everything turned out great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe this concludes the presentation segment for today's meeting. I know we have reached the quorum while we were conducting presentations. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Brunson, Galanter, Garcetti, Hahn, Holden, Labange, Sikowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, 11 members present in the form, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Perry moves and Mr. Weiss seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Reyes moves and Ms. Hahn seconds.
On the regular agenda, there are confirmation of city officials. Items seven through nine are confirmations of Board of Information Technology Commissioners. Ms. Lomax, Mr. Gerardo, and Mr. Gradstein.
We will take those as a group, but let's go through the agenda first and call specials, and we'll take this back up as a first item.
Okay, item number one is item notice for a public hearing. That is Planning Line Use Management report has been submitted, has been circulated to all the council members, and I believe there's a card on that item.
We do have cards on that item, let's call it special.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items two through six.
Items two through six now before us, public hearings have been held on these items. Members wishing to call any specials. Mr. Reyes calls item three special.
Number six.
Mr. Weiss calls item six special. Any other specials? Staff of members in the back, any other specials? We have before us items two, four, and five. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Items four and five are approved. Item two, being an ordinance, is held over for a second reading.
Next item, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have not been held, items 10 through 28.
Items 10 through 28 now before us, I do have cards on item 26, we'll call that special. Do not have requests from members of the public to speak on the balance of the items. We shall deem the public hearings opened and closed. Any specials? Item 27 called special by Mr. Reyes. Any other specials? Any other specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Item 10 held over for our second reading.
On the continuation agenda, item number 29 is an item for which public hearings have been held.
Item 29, public hearing has been held. Members wishing to call item 29 special, that's on the continuation agenda. Madam Clerk, who had requested the continuance from the last meeting?
Mr. Holden had a question on it from Wednesday, and I believe...
Let's call it special and give Mr. Holden an opportunity to be heard on that.
Do you wish to return to the commissioners, items seven through nine?
I believe that completes the agenda. We have items called special, yes. Let's return to the commissioners.
That's Ms. Lomax, Mr. Gerardo, and Mr. Gradstein.
If I can ask you to all come forward at this time, I believe public hearing has been held in committee on these items.
Yes, it has.
Members wishing to be heard on the confirmation of commissioners. Let's give it a minute. Guards, can we advise the members in the back of chambers that the agenda is moving Thank you for your patience this morning. Okay, members wishing to be heard on items seven, eight, and nine. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Questions I have can be answered by all three individually, but they'll be general questions. I serve on the Information Technology Committee as the vice chair.
Mr. Zine, I know you were the first to push a button. Our courtesy in the horseshoe allows the chair of the committee to be heard first.
Oh, I thought you called on me.
I had, but Mr. Ridley Thomas joined us after.
You got it.
If it's okay with you, then I recognize Mr. Ridley Thomas.
But I did jump out when my name was called.
You're right.
I'm going to sit out now. Councilmember Ridley Thomas.
You'll be next, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Zine, members of the council. The mayor has sent forth these three nominees to serve in the capacity of commissioners for the Information Technology Agency. It is my view that they should be adopted as presented by the mayor. Collectively, their aptitude ought to suggest to us that the business that we have to attend to in the area of the city's technological infrastructure can and will be addressed in a collaborative way, that collaboration being the mayor, the council, and the Board of Commissioners itself. And so with that in mind, that I ask that you adopt that which is before us, which is the confirmation of those three individuals who are here. That comes at the request of the mayor and as chair of the committee, I am in concurrence with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. The reason I have these questions today is this was waved through the committee, and they're general questions that I'd like to get some answers to since I don't know two of the gentlemen, and I did have a brief discussion with nominee Lomax. Specifically, information technology and the general manager position has gone through some changes. And with that in mind, linking this whole system together with the information highways of great concern that we have a smooth operation, which oftentimes is not, specifically, what would you like to address in that arena, information technology with the city of Los Angeles, if confirmed? And if I can get an answer from each of you, please.
Matthew Garrigus. One of the things I'm both a, obviously I have a business in downtown, I live in North Valley, I've been a consumer of all the various entries into the information highway. What I'd like to see is more of a standardization of the pipeline. For instance, I, my business downtown, I'm in a Class A building, and we've actually gone backwards in the last six months from a fiber system and gone back to an old T1. I'd like to see maybe more integration in terms of having everybody on the same level playing field, in terms of having the same type of speed integration. I've read the, about the 311 system that is being proposed. I believe that's something that should be up and going. I haven't, you know, I haven't seen any working copy of it, but in that sense... access, and at a price that everyone can afford. I know that I have a cable system out in the North Valley, and I look at the bill that I get there and I say to myself, you know, I can't imagine, can everybody else, you know, pay that type of price? I'd like to see everybody have the same type of access that I do, because in terms of the communication between everybody, if you're at different speeds and at different types of systems, the system clogs up.
Okay, sure.
Councilmember Zine, thank you.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Yes, I'm Henry Gradstein, and if, I agree with what Mr. Garegas said, and if I can break them down into categories, I would think, obviously, as an overarching principle, we would work closely with the mayor's office to try to improve the quality of service. To be more specific, however, obviously with cable franchise agreements coming up for renewal in August after fifteen years, we have a tremendous opportunity and a tremendous responsibility to improve the quality of service and gain much for the city from the franchise process, considering the advances in technology and so on, including depending upon how we deal with contractually substantial system upgrades, certainly contributions for public television, education, and governmental agencies. The quality of service, in my personal opinion, as a consumer, needs to be substantially upgraded. We certainly want to see what can be utilized with respect to the cable systems for both bridging the digital divide as well as getting everyone connected to the information superhighway. And then financially for the city, they, these organizations make a great deal of money, and I think the city obviously should benefit from that by giving basically their pipes to these entities. Going next, obviously doing what we can to get the 311 center on track. I believe that the website, which I've spent a fair amount of time with, especially lately to try to improve my learning curve, may benefit from additional work and consultation, although I think it's a fine site, but in terms of integrating the various services provided by the city, in terms of allowing individuals to, for example, get permits online to file reports, for the members of council to communicate with constituents, we might have a board task force look at that, look into that. The channels thirty-five, thirty-six and public access, I've spoken with Mr. Dean Hansel, who is on the commission now, and I think he has some very interesting ideas about uniformity in that regard. One issue is apparently these proceedings are broadcast only in English, and getting the technology so that these proceedings can be broadcast in Spanish as well is a very significant matter, which should be looked into. I mentioned briefly the digital divide earlier. We personally have donated computers and so on to the public school that my two small ones go to, but I think that somehow getting everyone connected regardless of financial status to computer access is essential. And obviously, I am going to be new to this, I have a steep learning curve, but we're, I think we are all very willing to commit ourselves to improving the quality of service for the city, and I think it's a wonderful opportunity to do that.
Thank you. Ms. Lomax.
Yes. Melanie Lomax. I'm very impressed with the, with the work of this committee and its potential in terms of addressing the, the digital divide. I think it's very clear that we have information in abundance available, and I think that there's been a lag in the poorer minority communities in terms of their having access to the technology that's available. I think that this is a critical tool, learning tool, it's a critical knowledge base which you have to have to succeed in the world that we're now living in. And I would be very interested in working closely with the council and the mayor and the committee in addressing the issue of digital divide. As a lawyer for school districts for many years, I was very intimately involved in reviewing, approving contracts for computers, software, and computer programs. And one of the things that has been raised with me by my home councilman, Councilman Labange, is the access of, to the members of the community in general about information regarding the City of Los Angeles. And although the, the basic aspects seem to be in place, they're not necessarily coordinated together in the city, and I understand that there's a problem in terms of coordinating the technology and information within the city itself and its departments. I would pledge myself to that effort as well.
Okay, the 9/11 system has not received rave reviews. What plans would you put into place to correct the current 9/11 system within the City of Los Angeles?
Are you speaking?
All three, I'd like to address these, all three of you. We can begin with you.
Well, are you, I gather you're talking about the 9/11 dysfunctional aspect of 9/11?
Not the positive side, the negative side.
I, I think it's critical to have, in order to restore public confidence to this 911 system, that the technological problems with it be corrected. I think that that's a priority item. I think that that, use of that number and the accessibility and the reliability of it is critical to the members of the public and to responding on an emergency basis to personal crises. So I think that's something that has to have, be way up there in the order of priority.
Yes, sir.
In addition to, I'm sorry, in addition to what Ms. Lomax is saying, I think if the, when the 311 call system is up and running, that a certain burden that may be occurring with the 911 system will be alleviated in terms of calls being made to 911 that are not of an emergency basis. Okay?
I was gonna make the same point in terms of the 311 system, because I know in even our own household and at work, the computer's on maybe twenty-four hours a day, and that's something where in an emergency or a person has a concern, they could be online and, as they were saying too, could alleviate the problem with the regular phone type of 911 system. But again, if you're gonna increase the technology, like with any technology, you have to make sure on the other side you have the training to help those people deal with that new technology. I deal with it daily with, with our staff. More technology you bring in, you better make sure you have the appropriate training for it also, because otherwise the technology will just sit there.
And we've spoken the wide spectrum of information technology, how it relates to the general public, and there are currently problems within the city family with the different departments, with the computers, with the access, with the email system, and how sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. There's a concern, not only for the broad focus of the City of Los Angeles, for the consumers, and as we know, some cities get better reception and better service than others, others are ignored. The information technology within the city family itself, going to different departments, seeing the problems that have continued over time and been ignored. And I would ask that in your process within the department, with the police, the library, recs and parks, et cetera, that attention be paid to those departments, because it's critical that departments can communicate with each other, and they're being effective means of communication, and it's currently not happening. And there's been a tremendous turnover in personnel within information technology, and it's new to the arena, new to the Los Angeles, the technology information highway. It's not like forty years, fifty years. It's new in that timeframe. So a concern I would have is that you would address those issues for the broad spectrum and also for the city departments that rely on that, heavily rely on that, and it is not working to its maximum efficiency. Do you have any ideas how we can fix it in-house as well as the communities?
I agree, just a small portion of what that Pricewaterhouse report had in terms of the 311, talking about the different, different type of servers and systems they had. And it seems to be, and I just using analogy of, in a business, it seems to be that they just have too many of, too many different systems, whereas when we decided to set up a system in our office, and I, and I look at the city just as one big office, if you use the same type of systems, you have the same type of pipeline, going back to your first question, getting either every department with fiber or some even type of pipeline for the communication, and then getting the same type of system on each end. To me, it seems, it might seem simplistic, but I just know from our own experience, when you get the same operating system, you have the same software, I mean, it's, it's not too scientific, but you keep it the same on both sides and you're able to manage it and have a system that you don't always have to be calling an IT person. I have my IT person here, because he's so excited about this, but he, you know, the simpler you keep it, the more you don't have to call your IT person, you know, if you get the right type of program, and everybody has the same consistent type of software and hardware, it just always works better. It's not something that, some new idea, but.
Thank you. Regarding associations, are there any information technology associations any of you are involved with or members of?
None as far as associations, just paying my bill to Time Warner.
No? Okay.
I'm a member of the State Bar's Information and Technology Subcommittee.
And that's used in our legal arena throughout the state?
Yes, it deals with technology issues and law firms.
And do they have the same kind of problems with you?
Yes.
So is there a solution?
Well, there's a lot of lack of coordination, and it, and it makes it difficult, I think, to really get full benefit of the technology that's available.
Okay, and the concern I have is that we empower our commissioners, our commissions, to be more than a rubber stamp, to bring these issues forward and to press the general managers to set those policies so we can better serve the public. And we know that many parts of the city aren't happy with the delivery of services, and as we enter this arena of information technology, and we have problems with the cable franchises, we have problems with the cell sites for cell phones, and the frustration and dissatisfaction, and then people look to us to say, what are we doing to correct it? What are we doing to fix it? So I would emphasize that, once confirmed, that message we deliver to, and you're gonna be fortunate, dealing with a new general manager within information technology, that that agenda has to be met. And sadly, I don't think it's been met to customer satisfaction throughout the City of Los Angeles over the past few years, as we can all testify to from our own experiences. Thank you, Mr. Zine. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations on your nominations. I know at least two of your professional careers and strongly support them, I'm impressed at what I hear from Mr. Gradstein this morning as well, but I wanted to ask a few questions. One was actually a comment before, that I think the 311 will be the most important thing, that project that you focus on, and you'll have a lot of important things to focus on, but people's distance from government right now, that project, which is so long overdue, I think will go so far to reconnecting people, and has a lot more potential than just being an operator, just being a clearinghouse, but really has the potential, if we look at some of the websites throughout the country and the governmental sector, to really bring people in in a much more substantive way, and I'll get to that. Well, maybe I should ask that first. We have a considerable GIS capability, and we have, you know, the mapping that we've been doing with GIS systems, but I was wondering if you have any thoughts of where we can go further with that? I think there's both the public and a business component to this. The public component is not only allowing people to go in and find out who their representatives are and where the nearest fire station, police station are, but also bring that into some degree to look at where neighborhoods are and what, what development projects are happening, what public works projects are happening. So often, neighborhood activists would love that to be a single clearinghouse, so they could see on a map everything that's happening in their neighborhood, and certainly the neighborhood councils are trying to piece this together, department by department, but if we could look at that as part of the 311 project, I think that's very important. Also, on the private side, there's been some pilot projects that we're beginning to do in looking at how we can help businesses understand where brownfields are in other areas, redevelopment areas. I know that we have the White Point project, we're doing this in the East LA redevelopment area, but also the capability of the GIS system to allow developers to see from their own desks the capacity for given areas for economic development. And right now, it's all about that predictability and that transparency that they don't have, which is why they're still continually staying away from those areas. I was wondering if any of you had thoughts on where we could go further on the GIS stuff, and if you hold my time, I have one other question.
Well, it seems to be an interdepartmental working group would be helpful to do the kind of coordination that you're discussing, and that the 311 center can be integrated with the website so that there can be up-to-the-minute information with respect to what's going on with the city and so forth. However, these are matters that require some extensive study, and certainly, at least initially in terms of my experience, something that I'm gonna have to get up to speed on, which I intend to do vigorously and worked very hard to do that. But I think that the ability to connect city government to the populace and make it easily accessible is a paramount importance, it is to me.
No, I, in terms of, I think of those parties that you're talking about, whether it be the developers, whoever, they have the ability, or I think they have the information, or they're able to access it easily, or easy. I think it still goes back to making sure that everybody in the community is able to have that access. I don't think they're, it's at that level yet. I think getting people to have the access first and then, and then putting in the information is a way to look at it too, because I, if they don't have the computer, if they don't have the, the type of access they need to even come to the site, you know, having a lot of good information, it doesn't get to spur, it really doesn't help, you know, the general public.
I would have to only simply agree with the other two. And, you know, and I think one thing that is basic to all of this is that there is a, a staff saving time that is connected with having not to have to have council members and departments and staff repeatedly asking, answering the same questions. And I think that as we go into stepping up the, and fine tuning and strengthening the Information Technology Commission and the department, that one of the things that's gonna really be a byproduct of all this is that you're not going to have to be burdened with the same repetitive questions, because there's some centralized place in which this information can be housed.
One other comment before my last question, which is, I think also with refranchising, it's important to look not just at, at public television, but also public access as a counterbalance to, we have channel thirty-five which goes throughout the city, I think the people and neighborhood councils will need that counterbalance right now, we have to piece that together, you know, a cable company by cable company, and looking at that as maybe a package deal on the refranchising, I think will be important too. Last thing is, it's also distribution of information. I know some departments have begun to do this, but I think that anything that you could do to help distribution of information through handheld devices or other technological items, when we have city employees who are going by areas, I mean, people always say this out there about bulky items, you know, why is it that those folks that are always driving by, whether it be police or sanitation, can't call them in even if they're not the people tasked that day to do it? And I think there's a host of that. If we, if we have city employees that are educated about code in general throughout the city, given the technology to actually do that as they're driving, you know, people can do that very simply, and other cities have begun to do that. So if you have any comments about it, please, I'd love to hear them, but if not, at least just a word for the future, that I think that would be very, very helpful for constituents.
Well, that as well as possibly an emergency management system, which would be, I think, very helpful for the city. And I know there's a number of companies that are now trying to develop that kind of program and software for the city to take into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Councilmember President. There is a comment made, an observation, I believe, one of the commissioners made regarding access in Spanish. And for me, that's a very important statement, not only in Spanish, but in the older parts of the district, you have essential neighborhoods that serve as the Alice Island for many of the international communities. So you have Asia-Pacific, South Pacific islanders, you have a whole variety of people coming into our city at a time when we're trying to form neighborhood councils, at a time when we're dealing with re-districting, at a time when we're trying to get more people involved with policing and becoming the eyes and ears and extension of our Los Angeles Police Department. What I'd like to ask of you is if I can get a timeframe sent to my office about a work program, or the policy, or the strategy, and how we're going to do this. You know, in these settings, you know, we make a lot of statements, we make a lot of comments, afterwards we go into our office and things are forgotten. And this is one issue I don't want to forget. This is one program, one access point I want to make sure is created, especially for those who make up our communities. If you look at the makeup of our city, it's obvious, we need, we need to enrich our process with the diversity in languages, so we can complement the English-speaking community as well. So I'm asking you... in languages so we can complement the English-speaking community as well. So I'm asking you, I'd like to get from you a date certain, either progress report or a strategy, just let me know what you're going to do, how you're going to do it, ask commissioners, and how we can help you amplify, improve that accessibility. And that's something I like, I like a commitment from you to do that.
Yes, Councilperson, the technology does exist to have simultaneous Spanish language broadcasts, and apparently, that's something that may be obtained in some way from the cable channels, the cable, excuse me, the cable service providers. And since their contracts are coming up for renewal in August, and since they have the technology and they haven't yet made it freely available, it would seem that this is an opportune time to go forward in that. And I certainly do commit to a time certain, but I need to study the issues before I can...
I understand that. I know we have ideas, we have goals, but I'd like to put some meat on that statement by direct action, and I'd like to see something that's going to happen in that direction.
Let me ask you, would it be acceptable, I mean, in terms of commitments, I think that my commitment clearly is there. In terms of timelines, I would think that it'd probably be wise to get back to you with a progress report, since we really haven't been on the commission long enough.
I understand. I'm being very opportunistic at this time. But this is the first time we get to speak, and I just want to emphasize the significance, I think, for the city as a whole to have that access, as have been articulated by my colleagues.
I think the web base would be the easiest to get to because it's a static, something that can be translated, but the other one would take a little bit more time. But I think the static web base type page could be converted into multi-language fairly quickly and simply.
Thank you. Mr. Ridley-Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, as indicated in my opening remarks, these three nominees have the aptitude, which has now been evidenced pursuant to a series of questions, to serve the city in the capacity of commissioners for the Information Technology Board. And to the extent that we have heard from them, to the extent that the mayor has sent them forward for our consideration, I urge a unanimous adoption of the three nominees that are before us for this said commissioner, commission.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley-Thomas. Ms. Galanter. Ms. Galanter calls the previous question. We have one member who's still waiting to speak. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the previous question. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, two noes.
Previous question is called. That ends discussion. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on confirmation of the commissioners. Excuse me? Okay, motion to separate the votes. We'll vote on each commissioner individually as opposed to as a group as we normally do. I think we can do that without objection. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item number seven.
Tom.
That is the appointment of Ms. Millie Lomax. Please open the roll. I urge unanimous vote. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, one no.
That is approved. Please open the roll on item number eight, the appointment of Matthew Gergos.
The same.
Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And please open the roll on item number nine, Mr. Henry Gradstein. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All three commissioners are hereby confirmed. Congratulations.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, sir. Could I just say, I'd like to introduce Ann Finn, who came today. She's the widow of Councilwoman Finn, and she came as my sponsor today, and I just would like to acknowledge her.
And, as always, welcome to council chambers. Thank you for being here. Next item, please.
Mr. President, there are thirteen members present now. Do you wish to reconsider the ordinances on items two and ten for a vote?
Let's do that. Please open the roll on reconsideration of the ordinances. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Orders are now back before us. We do have twelve members now. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Before proceeding to the next item, Chair recognizes Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. And may I also just say, welcome to Ann Finn, who was one of the great women champions on the elected charter reform commission, and she helped to reform our city charter. So it's always nice, it's an honor to have her in our chambers. Mr. President, I was just respectfully going to ask, there are several of us, I know, that are having to leave, and I was concerned about item twenty-six. It's an important item, and I know as Chair of the Education Neighborhoods Committee, it's an item I want to weigh in on, so I would ask if we could move that item up. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any objection to item twenty-six being taken out of order? And seeing none, that's, item number one should be a quick item. Okay. Mr. Gassetti, your request? Mr. Gassetti, are you okay with item twenty-six being taken out of order? Okay, then without objection, we shall take item twenty-six next. We do have cards on that item. Council calls forward Mr. Glenn Gritsner, to be followed by Ernest Lee and Linda Hedden.
Thank you, Councilman. My name is Glenn Gritsner with the Los Angeles Unified School District. As many of you know, we recently took full ownership of the Ambassador Hotel property after approximately twelve years of uncertainty surrounding the property. Because of all the legal uncertainty, the LAUSD is really taking a fresh look at this site. As you know, it's one of the most impacted sites in the city. It has many, many students bust out of there every day, and there are many, many ways that we could use this property. And our first, the first thing we need to do is to really make sure that we provide the schools and the educational environment that the students in that neighborhood and that community need. We have not had the first public meeting yet since we own the property or really taking a blank slate look. That meeting is tomorrow. We also have a number of things that we consider. We don't even have all the information that we need yet on the property. There's a lot of things to assess, a lot of things to consider. So because of all the complexities around this site and because of the fact that we're still garnering so much information that we don't have, and in many ways, most importantly, because we haven't heard from the public yet on this issue, since we've taken full ownership of the site, we think that this deserves further consideration. Would very much support it going to committee for further discussion, further exploration in the issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Lee, to be followed by Linda Hedden and Gary Russell.
Mr. President and members of the council, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. My name is Ernie Lee, and I'm the Executive Director of the Korean-American Chamber of Commerce. We represent the Korean-American merchants in Los Angeles area and indirectly economic business organizations that are founded in Los Angeles. I speak from a point of view, Korean-Americans who are largely immigrants, and when they come to the United States, their number one priority usually is educating their children. So it is, in this perspective, that I represent both the views of parents as well as the business in the area. Wilshire Center, and especially the Ambassador property that we're talking about, is very central to the commercial district in that area. And since the riots in nineteen ninety-two, we've been steadily recovering that area for Korean-American businesses as well as other business in the area. If there are changes to be made by this school plan, our major concern is that it be used in a mixed development that will accommodate for business use as well as entertainment and education. I mean, we see that there's certainly enough room for the area to be developed into that kind of use. I think it would be very, very important to incorporate the community's view in this issue. But Korean-American merchants in the area do support the mixed-use motion, and we thank the Councilman Holden and the Councilman Labange for putting forward this motion.
Thank you very much. Ms. Linda Hedden, to be followed by Gary Russell and Ken Bernstein.
Mr. President, councilmembers, my name is Linda Hedden. Thank you very much for giving us this opportunity to address the council.
Put the mic down in front of you, Ms. Linda Hedden.
Thank you. I am the Vice President of the Wilshire Center Business Improvement Corporation, and I'm representing the members of this organization, which consists of commercial and residential owners between Wilton Place and Commonwealth along Wilshire Boulevard and between Sixth Street and Seventh Street. We'd like to thank Councilman Nate Holden for submitting this motion and Councilman Tom Labange for settling this motion. Ten years ago, this community had lost its nature businesses due to the civil riots and the fear of a high school on the Ambassador Site. We had vacancies of thirty-five percent. Today, we are striving to achieve rate of utilization and renewed interest in the area. Our vacancy is down to thirteen and a half percent. Retail shopping is coming back, as well as many restaurants. This renewed interest in our community is helping to employ the many residents in this area. We are aware that there's a great need for a high school in this area, and we wish to support the idea of a high school on Eighth Street on the southern portion of the Ambassador Site. We believe it is imperative to have a mixed-use project on Wilshire Boulevard to stimulate the economy and to keep the momentum of new businesses coming to Wilshire Center. We wish to preserve, protect, and improve the quality of life on Wilshire Center. We can have the best of both worlds, a high school in our neighborhood and a mixed-use project on Wilshire Boulevard for economic growth. Let me quote LAUSD School Board President Capri Shong, when she said, "To ensure that the resulting high school is an asset to the community, not a detriment." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Russell and Mr. Ken Bernstein.
Good morning. My name is Gary Russell. I'm an architect and president of the Wilshire Center Chamber of Commerce. This motion is supported by the Wilshire Center Business Improvement Corporation, as Linda has mentioned, Wilshire Center Chamber of Commerce, which I represent, the Korean-American Federation of Los Angeles, the Korean-American Chamber of Commerce, which was represented here, and the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. This motion lays out a concept that meets the needs of all and places the city as an active player in the development of the Ambassador Site. The Ambassador Site, it represents an opportunity to create a unique development in the middle of a dense urban area. This development would become the anchor for the community, the catalyst for the continued revitalization effort, and serves several needs of the community: school facilities, retail amenities, and housing, with a pedestrian orientation towards Wilshire Boulevard. The goal of this motion is to advance the immediate construction of a school and a mixed-use concept that will better integrate the school facility into the community. This motion would help protect the existing jobs and provide additional needed jobs and taxes. This motion will allow LAUSD and the community to work together to construct a community-based school, a retail, entertainment, and housing complex, and continue the recent Wilshire Center's revitalizations efforts, which started in nineteen ninety-four with Councilman Nate Holden's help and now with Councilman Tom Labange. Our community is committed to developing additional schools by way of charter schools. We currently have a charter petition with LAUSD for review right now. We're committed, and we are apparently have, a lot of our charter schools have opened up already in our area, and we're committed to build more of those. We believe this motion eliminates the uncertainty that have enveloped the Ambassador Site and moves the development towards a win-win solution for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bernstein.
Thank you. Good morning, members of the council. Ken Bernstein with the Los Angeles Conservancy. The Conservancy believes that the Ambassador Hotel issue is extremely complex and extremely important. It's important to remember that the Ambassador is not just a blank slate for the school district to build on. It is one of our most important historic sites in the city, one of the two most important historic hotels, along with the Biltmore in Los Angeles. We've assembled a talented team of top Los Angeles development professionals, architectural professionals, and engineers to look at the feasibility of reusing the Ambassador as a centerpiece of the school campus, and we've discovered that it is entirely feasible architecturally, structurally, and economically. We're not taking a position on whether or not there should be commercial development along Wilshire Boulevard, but we do have a concern about the specific wording of this motion. As I can show you, the Ambassador Hotel sits in the middle of the property, and while even our reuse proposal contemplates potential commercial frontage or could be used as additional educational development along Wilshire on the six to seven acres, by dividing the site in half and stipulating that there'd be, half of the site is commercial, that would essentially seal the fate of the hotel by drawing the line at that place and assuring demolition. Since this is a complex issue, we're supportive of LAUSD's request to send this item to Education Neighborhoods Committee. It is something that deserves further discussion among all the stakeholders. We ask, though, that the council look at ways to work with LAUSD to find a win-win-win solution, one that provides much-needed school seats for kids, one that reuses and preserves this important historic site in Los Angeles, and one that meets the economic development needs of the Wilshire community. We think all of that is possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on item number twenty-six. Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, I'm upset. This issue's been with this city for more than fifteen years. The Conservancy is out of order. In their request, they signed off on the deal between Lester Crin, the Los Angeles City, the City of Los Angeles regarding a demolition permit, and the Conservancy, where the city granted the Conservancy an extension of one year, and they had an option to acquire the property for the purpose of saving it. The year is run, that is the law. They have no rights, no further rights. That agreement was filed with the County Registry and Recorder's Office, so that anyone acquiring that property after fourteen years ago would have full knowledge, including the Conservancy, that that would be the arrangement with the City of Los Angeles. Mr. President, members, Mr. Lester Crin, who used to own the Empire State Building, all the Hilton Hotels and all, came to Los Angeles, stood at that podium. He said, "I will forego the demolition permit, and I'll be willing to sign the agreement. Would not request a demo permit until such time that we have drawn, drawn drawings and approved by the City of Los Angeles. That way, we're able to save the building. That's the only arrangement that I would accept, because I didn't want to hold a vacant lot on Wilshire Boulevard." At that time, Mr. President, I have consumed six minutes for me. Authorize the motion. Mr. President, members, Wilshire corridor was fresh. The commercial buildings were being rented, and then Zari Altschaffski, Jackie Goldberg, and Richard Katz came to my district, even before Tridicon even got off the drawing board, even before it was thought about, even before Goldberg was elected, destroyed an opportunity that we had at that time to save the Wilshire corridor, saying, "Let's put a school there." What did they do? They caused all the businesses, the banks and the insurance companies, to move out of the Wilshire corridor. It's taken us that long to try to revitalize it with a BID business district, with the Wilshire Center, trying to restore, we got the businesses to be more active, more proactive. And what we're doing today is being proactive. We're saying to the school boards, here's what we'd like to do. And for the past ten years, the school board's been saying to me, "Let's have it this way. Let's do commercial on the front and a school on the back," and I've been saying, "No, because it's going to destroy the business climate of that community." But now, it's just fine, let's do that. Then comes the sending to committee, what's the purpose of sending it to the committee? To stall and stall and stall. This corridor, Wilshire corridor, could have been saved for the benefit of the people of the city. The rental per square foot dropped to seventy-five cents. The businesses moved to Glendale, Burbank, and Pasadena, and we lost that. When are we going to wake up? I'm saying to you, Mr. President, members, this is a fair motion. It will provide for a school. It will provide for a school. That's what they want. It will provide for additional job and job opportunities and put some of those facilities on a tax roll, which will benefit the schools and also the City of Los Angeles. I mean, we got to thank Gary Russell and Linda and all of them for staying the course to try to save the Wilshire Center corridor. And to hear, it's the first administration, I got to tell you, to take a position on this issue without consulting the author of the measure, which disturbs me to no end, and badly supported it, the motion for the development, really supported the motion for development, not a school, a total development. Here, we ask the school district to take a look at, being proactive, that is, that they have development on the front side that they asked for initially and a school on the back. And what's wrong with that?
Thank you, Mr. President.
What they're saying, they don't want to do anything at all.
Your time is over.
No, my time is six minutes for the makeup of the motion. Come on, you're sitting up there, you should know that. But if you want to take that position again, go ahead.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilmember Han.
Ladies and gentlemen, chair, members of council, Councilman Holden makes a good argument. You make a good statement. Yes, this has been happening in our city for fifteen years. You've been a part of this, but let's remember, in the last fifteen years, it has been a different day in the City of Los Angeles. And I know we get tired of hearing, "It's a new day," but the fact of the matter, let's remember, it was only a couple of months ago that we once again rescued the Ambassador Hotel. As you remember, there was an emergency meeting between the mayor and the school board when the developer wanted to outbid the school district, and it was a very difficult situation, but we were determined to make sure that we were partnering with the school district in helping them achieve the needed seats that they need to build just to keep up with the growing population in Los Angeles. And while this may not be a bad idea to make this a mixed-use project with the school on the back and the retail on the front, the problem I have with this is the school district has just recently gotten ownership of this property. We have not had an opportunity to talk about it, to have community input on it. I think for us to move this motion forward today is a slap in the face to the community who's having their first community meeting tomorrow. And I think we need to change the way we do things and allow for community input, and I believe the creation of the Neighborhoods and Education Committee was for exactly these kinds of issues in the city where we can bring together our educational partners, our business partners, our community partners, our city departments, so we can figure out how to make joint use agreements and projects that will ultimately benefit everyone. But I am uncomfortable supporting this before I know how everyone else in the community feels about it. The school district has asked us not to move forward this day, and while we are making strides in our partnership with the school district, I am uncomfortable with us moving this motion forward today. I would like to see it come to the Education and Neighborhood Committee so that we can have this healthy debate. It's not going to stall it, and I don't think having community input is a correlation to stalling things. It's about getting consensus, having everyone in these communities, business, education, neighbors, buy into this project. So I would like to see it come back and have a healthy debate, discussion, work some of these issues out, so ultimately, it becomes a model in the city for how we can combine mixed-use, retail, school. There's great opportunities here, but I don't like the way this process is working. Fifteen years ago, maybe the city did it this way. I don't think we should do it this way anymore.
So, Ms. Han, your request is by way of a motion to send this to committee?
Yes.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Members of council, thank you, Ms. Han. Thank you, Mr. Holden. And it has been a fight and a struggle for the Ambassador and for many years. As I started as the deputy for John Farrell, one of the first presentations I made was to the Kiwanis in the Ambassador Hotel on a Wednesday. All these years have passed, the building has sit here. Mr. Holden has tried to campaign and successfully moved the effort there. And the interesting thing that has taken place in all those years, and we know of all part of Koreatown, which originally started at Jefferson in Vermont in what is the Eighth District, and moved uptown to Olympic Boulevard and now has taken full fulfillment of Olympic Boulevard and has now moved to Wilshire Center and has led the revitalization, and with the great help of the Wilshire Chamber of Commerce and the Korean American Chamber of Commerce, good things has happened. But as each day goes forward, we also have changes. As Janice mentioned, it's a new day. I do believe in process. I do believe in getting community input. I also do believe that we need to do something at the Ambassador Site. I do believe that we should have commercial that faces the front that adds that linkage along Wilshire Boulevard. I do believe Seventh Street possibly should go through, but I'd also be open to what the Conservancy supports as far as restoring the 1921 historic building to a school, because I went to an old high school, and they were going to tear it down once, but they saved it. God bless Nita Moby and all the other women who saved it, Alberta Burke and Joanna Gabrielson. But now, we're here today to discuss this, but what's before you, and I'm going to hurt my dear friend, Mr. Holden, by this. I'm not going to hurt Mr. Holden. I'm not going to hurt Mr. Holden by saying this here. I think it should go to committee. I think now we have to discuss this in a form. We have an opportunity to have people come before us from other entities in partnership. We have invited the chancellor of the Community College District in to hopefully speak to us about colleges from Harvard to Mission to Pierce to Valley to City College where I think high schools should go on Vermont and Melrose in the Thirteenth District. But in this particular case here, this discussion, I ask the members that we do send it to committee and also that we work with Land Use Committee in the future. The Planning Department now is focusing and directing on this. Our mayor has asked us to focus and direct on these issues here, and I think the people. And the only thing I can say to you, why it's so important, is this morning, as I left from a hike in the park, in Griffith Park, I passed a corner of the school. It was forty-four degrees, as they reported on K and X in the morning, and there were children standing on the corner waiting to get on a bus to go to another part of the city to get a classroom. We have to do something, but we should go to committee on here. We should continue to work with the leadership of the community to try to find a way that we can make what is best for all of Los Angeles in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. The chair recognizes Councilman Reyes.
Madam President, colleagues, against my better judgment, I'm speaking on this issue, but truly, I feel confused. I feel confused because I'm hearing the same thing, but yet, I see a lot of emotion and I'm seeing anger. My question is, what are we doing? What are we doing with this process? I want to know what the committee do for us here? Do we have control of the school district and what conditions, what issues, issues of design? What is our committee going to do to impact that? That's one question. I understand Mr. Gristner is already talking about a process. Now, whose process are we going to follow? Are we going to follow the school district's process or the city's process? And up to now, have we had any real connection with decision-making and how this has transpired? I can tell you as a staff person dealing with Valmont, we found out about decisions in the paper, but they did not even acknowledge the parents and the kids of those neighborhoods. Are we doing the same thing now? What are we doing? Our kids need to go to school. Kids are dropping out. I mean, on and on, I keep saying, we got to do something to tell our kids that they are important, because we are losing them to gangs. So my question to you is, what are we doing? What is this committee going to do? Can anyone give me an answer? And what is the school district? I'm opening to three colleagues, because we should be playing politics with the kids' lives. Let's understand what we're doing to our kids. That's my, I want to just open up that question to understand how to vote on this.
Do I do my time or your time remain?
I got a minute and twenty-one. We are at twelve twenty-two.
I would say, say, Mr. President, members, Madam President, members, all the committee will do is stall it. Listen to me now. That's, not that just your intention, but that will be the net effect, which is the consequences of your action. What you're saying here today, you're making a record.
Mr. Holden, you did answer the question. You are next up to speed.
Madam President, I'm explaining, I'm going to answer his question and what he's really saying, what is the committee is going to do. And I was talking about the net effect of the committee and what it will do. What it will do is delay the action. All this motion does is suggest to the school board, here's what we think you're going to do in your deliberation and your planning, is being proactive. That's all it is. And what, the committee is going to come back and then say, "Let's vote on it a month from now, two months from now?" Same thing.
Okay. Mr. Reyes, do you have another thirty seconds?
What this will do is allow us to get people from four fifty North Grand to this table at future meetings, in committee meetings, and to work together and have a public discussion on what we do. And the thing I want to mention, it's public-public partnerships that we have to do to make things maximize the use for the public schools. And that's what will happen, and it hasn't happened before.
I understand the spirit and the intent, but have they demonstrated to us as a body that they're willing to go forward and put together a precise timeline, a timeframe, and a commitment to the changes and to the contribution that you're anticipating for the neighborhood? Do we have that confidence? That's my question.
Did you get this book? I know, we got to work it. We got to make, we got to teach them how to do the thing right. That's our job now.
Mr. Reyes, oh, Ms. Han, I don't know if you wanted to answer.
Since I'm chair of the committee, I can tell you and my committee members, Alex Padilla and Tom Labange, we will not stall it. We can put it on our next committee agenda. And again, what I'm seeing is we have an opportunity to show leadership in this regard. We have an opportunity to bring the right people to the table to talk about these issues. I think everybody still has a right to comment on the use of this property, and I think in the committee situation, we can ask, we can urge them to come up with a timeline. We can urge them to listen to us. We can get our, again, our city departments involved in this process. I think for us to move this along on a Rule sixteen is to say, "We know better than you, and this is what we want," not only to the school district, but to the community. If you don't want to send it to committee, at least I would say we should continue this until after the community has its first meeting tomorrow.
Okay. Mr. Reyes, your time is over, and the chair now recognizes Councilman Buzan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, colleagues. I support both of my colleagues, Councilman Holden who represents the area, Councilmember Han who's concerned about the community input. And I think that since the meeting's going to be held tomorrow and we take action today, it would really be a slap in the face of those who are going to be attending the meeting that we make our decision prior to their input. And it has been fourteen years. It has been an eyesore. It doesn't make the Miracle Mile look like it should, the Miracle Mile, but if we send it to the committee, we continue it, we do what is appropriate. We want neighborhood involvement. We want neighborhood councils to be a part of the process. This is a major development, whether the school, the shopping center, whatever goes in there, it's a major impact on traffic, it's a major impact on the community. They need to say. And the old way was, we would do it and they would be excluded. The new way is, we want them included in the process. And if we continue it a few days, we send it to committee and expedite it through to get the input, but we're trying to put a network together. We now have a committee chaired by Councilmember Han that brings the school in so we can have it done. So I support both of you in the process, but at the same time, what do we do for the community that's going to be impacted by a school? And what goes along with the construction? What goes along with the students that arrive? What goes along with the businesses that are going to be brought in that area? We've got to do something with it, and it's been ignored for too long. So I understand what Councilman Holden's saying. I understand what Councilman Han's saying. So I support both of you, but we can only come up with one decision. So I'd split the decision, send it to committee, and make them all happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buzan. The chair recognizes Mr. Rossetti.
Move the previous question, please.
All right. The, open the roll on the question of the previous question. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Nine, nine, two, okay, that matter has not passed. The chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Madam President, members, I thank you, Mrs. Buzan, for making that statement about there's going to be a meeting tomorrow, so therefore, we should delay our action and send it to committee. Wrong philosophy, wrong concept, wrong practice. When we take positions on legislative matters every day before the matter's heard in committee, before the matter goes to the public, we states the city's position, and that's what will happen tomorrow. Tomorrow, the public or individuals, however they have planned, will go before the school board and say what they think is appropriate for design and development for that area. The city's got to have a position. For example, is indicated in our general plan, and I'll repeat that, is already indicated in the city's general plan, that we have mixed use. All we're doing is reiterating and restating the position that the city's already taken. Now, do you want to change your general plan? Do you want to change your position? It's already been your position. We highlighting it for the purpose of the meeting that will take place tomorrow. This is the city's position. It's giving proper notice to the school board, and what is wrong with that? Now, Mr. Labange was here when we discussed these matters. How could all this information get lost? We have other deputies who are here. How could all this information get lost and then relearn it again? That really makes no sense. I mean, this body should begin to understand that it has to be proactive. You can't react to what someone else is doing. You have the power, you have the vote, and that's what you exercise. Not that you have a priority or a preference of my committee, that committee, that, it doesn't matter to me at all, except for the fact that you have to be proactive. You got to give notice to the senate, to the assembly, to the other legislative bodies. You have to give notice as to what the city position is, that the city should never be preempted. The city shall never be preempted by those local governmental bodies, or state bodies, or the federal bodies. That's the function of this body. And if you understand that, then you can get a lot, you can be a lot more effective than you can or will be if you're just reacting to what other legislative bodies are doing or saying to you. Very often, you will say, the CLA will say to you, "We are not going to be preempted by the state legislature." State legislators are not taking away the authority and the rights of the local government." You'll hear that over and over again, and this is what you're doing, not giving it up. But you should serve notice by voting on this motion and say, "We would like to have a school there. We'd like to have some development to create more jobs and to provide revitalization for that community, just like we did in Howard." And what's wrong with that? We didn't send the committee to decide all these things. Senate, do whatever you want to do with it. My vote is no. I urge each and every one of you to vote no, and I say we should make our statement as to where the city's position is today on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. The chair now recognizes Ms. Han.
Thank you again. I just want to say that I don't have the kind of information right now as a member of the city council to say that this is the city's position, that this is exactly what should happen at that property. I, there's not enough information for me. I think it's a good idea to get all the information we can before we, and this exactly may what the end-up be, the use of that property. I'm not comfortable this time saying this is what the city's position is.
General plan right now, you read the information.
Thank you, Ms. Han. The chair now recognizes Mr. Reyes.
Thank you. Just a couple of points. The state has a higher jurisdiction, doesn't have to listen to the city. They're going to follow the general plan as indicated. I think we're in a position that we would like to amend the motion to support a scenario where we have the preservation of the Ambassador with a school with a mixed-use commercial But the bottom line, because of all the battles we've been through with Valmont, and maybe I'm a little, you know, cynical here, but the fact is, if their attorneys choose not to listen to us, they don't have to. And so, whatever position we put forward, it has to be because they are willing to cooperate. But the bottom line comes down when we want to assert a certain kind of a scenario, a certain kind of improvement, they don't have to listen. And so, I just want us to make our decisions based on what's real and what isn't. So I'd like to amend this motion to support what's been said, we preserve the Ambassador, we move on a school with mixed-use development, which is, I think, the bottom line of ten. With all the design-specific issues and all the articulation of this scenario, ultimately, they can ignore us, and they've done it before. Now, I know there's a different day, there's a new spirit, but the truth of the matter is, not to speak ill of attorneys, but if they want to stake their claim, take that position, that's what they're going to do. So just, I want to be cautious about how we use our time and our resources. Again, it's just a reality check, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. The chair recognizes Mr. Rossetti.
Move the previous question.
All right. The previous question has been called. There are no more people wishing to speak, so I think we will assume that the public hearing is closed, and we will now vote on the matter. Madam Clerk, the first motion?
There's a motion to refer this matter to Education and Neighborhood Committee.
All right. Open the roll. All right, open the roll. Mr. Reyes did make a motion, but the first motion we're voting on is the first one that was made, just referred to committee. Open the roll on the motion to refer this to committee.
No vote.
Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, two noes.
Okay, that matter has been referred to committee. Next, and that is including the motion that Mr. Reyes added as an amendment, so that will be considered in committee as well. Next item, ask her.
Madam President, item number six was called special by Councilmember Weiss. However, he has requested that be continued for one week to February first.
All right, item six will be continued. Members of the council, I understand that there may are many who may want to leave and may break a quorum. I would like at this point to recess our meeting with those matters still on the desk, to call the special meeting, because one of the items in the special meeting today is a time limit filed that we must act on today. So if we can recess our meeting and call the special meeting in the roll. Berdson, Galanter, Garcetti, and Hahn, Holden, Labange, Ms. Cascio, Lucheco, Perry, Reyes, Willie Thomas, Weiss, Lane Padilla, eleven members present in the quorum, Madam President. All right, and what?
I was excused to leave at twelve o'clock. Item one is also time-sensitive and needs to be acted on today. Could we take that before the special item? Because I absolutely have to leave.
Let us just call the special and see if there's going to be anything special, if we can just vote on it. We have three items.
There are three items, items for which public hearings have not been held, and there are no cards from the public.
All right, then we will close the public hearing on those matters. Items one, two, and three are before us on the special council meeting. Council, any members calling any items special? Seeing nothing, seeing none, called special. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, those are approved, and forthwith on item, on all three. All right, we will now adjourn the special meeting and call back into session the recess meeting. And Mr. Garcetti has called item number one. All right, this is, as I understand it, a required public hearing? Yes, and there are two cards submitted. Mr. Reyes, would you like to present the case first or call the public hearing? All right, let me ask two people who submitted cards, Joyce Director and Jerry Newman. Ms. Director?
Yes. Hi, good afternoon, Madam President and councilmembers. My name is Joyce Director, and I'm on the board of Hollywood Heights. I'm here as a visual reminder of all the residents that live in the area next to Hollywood and Highland. I would like you to put yourselves in our place when we come home and can't find any parking, because it has been taken by employees and visitors to Hollywood and Highland. All the agreements made with Triza Khan's Hollywood Heights and Hollywood Heights have been broken. Nobody wants this project to fail. But if our neighborhood is sacrificed, our neighborhood will fail. Renters will move out because they can't park, new renters will be difficult to find, real estate prices will fall, and sales will slow. Our neighborhoods are beautiful and historic. Most of the houses were built in the twenties in the Mediterranean architecture, mirroring the look of Greece and Italy. From day one, we have been forecasting the problems that Hollywood and Highland will bring to our neighborhoods. Please keep them to the agreement of finding parking for their employees within seven-hundred-and-fifty feet of the project. And do whatever you can to help them find and/or acquire extra parking. Using the metro is a dream that may come true in ten years. But right now, a reality, it's not a reality that we can count on. This is a car town. And with, and until that culture changes, the neighborhoods need your help now. A review every two years to look at, you know, if there's any problems that arise out of using the metro is too long. Problems need to be addressed immediately. There was something, when the construction was going on, they were supposed to provide parking, free parking, or subsidized parking for the construction workers. They were parking in our neighborhoods. It took a long time to figure out that what was happening was Triza Khan was giving the money to the subcontractors who were pocketing it and not giving it to their employees. Hence, the employees didn't want to pay for parking, so they parked in our neighborhoods.
Ms. Director, if I can interrupt you for just a moment, we appear to have lost a quorum, so I don't want you to continue speaking if in fact we're not going to be able to vote on this matter. We are attempting to see whether or not Ms. Hahn or Ms. Galanter is in the building and can return. We'll have that information momentarily, so if we could just suspend your continuation of your comments for a moment. Is there an indication from either office that someone is returning?
One question.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. Garcetti, this issue is important to you? Important item? You have it there today? Okay. Then why wouldn't you put my district item in front of yours? Maybe it was not, yours was probably not, see, yours was not that important to you and your constituents, obviously. No, well, it could have been held.
I think that, Mr. Holden, we have the city turning.
The city in circle, and when it goes around, it comes around. Like Gil Lindsay said. God bless Gil Lindsay.
I know. I think if the, under the variance appeal process, I believe that the applicant could give us a continuance to Tuesday and, but that we would need that writing. Okay, I don't know if the applicant is able to let us know whether or not there's a voluntary acquiescence to a continuance, or if not, the case expires today for lack of action. Okay, Mr. Newman, he wrote, need, has to do?
I'm working with the people, I'm going to serve your notice.
That we will allow a continuation or lifting of the time to act until next Tuesday.
I give Triza Khan enough.
Members of the council, we do not have a quorum, and, oh, Mr.?
Mr. Padilla is back.
Mr. Padilla is back, so we now have a quorum.
Then I'd like to continue.
Then the matter will continue. Ms. Director, could I ask you to complete your statements?
Okay, it's just one more thing that I want to say. Everyone wanted this project so badly that they gave into everything that was asked for without looking at the whole picture. Please look at the whole picture. Our neighborhood needs to be protected regarding our parking. Please don't change the seven-hundred-and-fifty-feet limit.
Okay.
And don't have reviews every two years. We need it a lot, a lot sooner. Thank you.
Okay, members of the council, Mr. Holden has now left. We now, again, do not have a quorum. Oh, he is in the back to, he sort of waved. He waved goodbye. Okay, I, Mr. Newman, I guess we're going to ask you to resubmit your willingness to allow this to be continued till Tuesday, and that will be the order with the acquiescence of the applicant. Members of the council, the, we are, do not have a quorum, and the council is adjourned. The matter's on the desk of the Honorable, will be continued.